Welcome, everyone, to the regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting here for the Willoughby Eastlake City Schools Board of Education at 35353 Curtis Boulevard. Mr. Chandler, if you call the roll.
Mr. Oskus.
Here.
Ms. New Year.
Here.
Mr. Vittori.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Dr. Beal.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could just for one moment, I would like to have a moment of silence. Silence for Joe Corb, who is a member of our staff who passed away this past month. He was a custodian at Edison Elementary, so please have a moment of silence. Our first item on the agenda is community engagement. Dr. Thompson?
Let me catch up. So, last month, there were no questions, but I'm getting one step ahead of myself. We have a treat today. Gail Myers and Rachel Legursky are here to present. And just to give you a little bit of back information about who they are, in 2015, when we were building our STEM education for students and trying to move further from just at SOI, well, and even as we were beginning that process at SOI, we wanted to make sure that we could build and then, most importantly, staff fabrication labs to the point where students learning STEM, science, technology, engineering, and math would have the opportunity to not just have the equipment, but know how to use the equipment. And we made a significant investment, and they made a more significant investment in themselves and in our school district. Both of them attended, and I'm not making this up, they both attended the Massachusetts Institute of Technology, MIT, I'm sure most of you have heard of that, Fab Academy. There are only a handful of teachers across the country that are FabLab certified by MIT, and we have two of them right here in Willoughby Eastlake School. It was an absolute ton of work for them to get that certification. And then we expanded with our mobile FabLab, which I'm sure some of you have seen, that we can move around, and we've expanded into Makerspaces. And I give all the credit to these two ladies, they're two of the most phenomenal teachers, and probably more importantly, women that you would ever get an opportunity to meet. So without further ado, I would like to introduce Mrs. Rachel Legursky and Ms. Gail Myers as they present on where we are, and just to bring the community and the Board up to speed on all the hard work that's been done over the last of six, seven years. And I have a feeling they'll use some form of technology.
Okay, well, Mr. Thompson, Dr. Thompson, you have just taken up our first three minutes of what we were going to talk about today.
Good.
But honestly, I'm Rachel Legursky, this is Gail Myers, and just to take a quick step back, we started at the School of Innovation, and at that time, I was a half-time specialist for the FabLab and half-time teaching art and design. And each year, we tried to add a little bit more, so after our first year, Gail Myers ran the mobile FabLab, so that was a chance for all of our elementary and middle school students to have a little taste of STEM. And after that, we kind of wanted to push it forward a little bit, platform out, to give our students a little bit more experience in all of this. So we brainstormed a little bit about how we could do that, and Mr. Chiranello and Dr. Thompson popped in, and I don't know if that was fortunate for us or unfortunate for you, but we kind of shared an idea that we had been working on for a little while about trying to get 3D printers into other schools. So we have this FabLab at South, a FabLab at North, we have mobile, but we still are only getting a chance to just kind of visit a little bit with some of the students. So what we did was write a grant, and we'll talk a little bit more about that after Gail tells you a little bit about these up here, that she did a beautiful presentation. So I'm Gail Myers, I operate and organize the mobile FabLab at the schedule for eight schools, our elementaries and our middle schools. This presentation is available to you on our district website under the new section. If you, we're not going to read it verbatim to you, we know that you're able to do that, but we've got some pictures for you to enjoy, so, um, did you want to, Rachel is... Well, again, I work with children from grades three through eight, but grades three through five, they have directed projects where they're learning the process to use the equipment. And then grades six through eight, at that time, those students already know the process, the design process, so it's their job to now incorporate that into their learning and their PBL projects. So I never really know quite what I'm going to be doing when I get to work, it just depends on how the students drive that design process. We've got awesome things going on at both North and South FabLabs. They are now two years old, am I correct in saying that? Two years old? Just phenomenal things. I have the pleasure of visiting sometimes, you know, when I'm in between schools, or sometimes I use their equipment, and I get to interact with high school kids. They're just phenomenal. So their digital fabrication classes are, look, bananas, are going very well. Kids are excited, and there's usually a waiting list, it's waiting to get in there, so. And here we are, back, circling back to... So as I was saying earlier, we had kind of sprung an idea on Mr. Chiranello and Dr. Thompson, and we wanted to get 3D printers into all the schools so that they had an opportunity to use the equipment, not only when Mrs. Myers is there, but even when we're not there. And so we were given permission, and we were given some third funding from the Board of Education, and I worked with Maker Gear, a company that is local, a Beachwood company. They reduced their price of their printer by a third, and then Gail and I worked with a couple of other people, and we fundraised through our business community. And some of you may have seen our announcements on Facebook and Twitter and flyers that we passed out at community meetings. But we are so proud to say that we had more than enough funders, that we were not only able to get each school a brand-new 3D printer from Maker Gear, we have a small bit of money left over, so we have been able to buy them some tools to use with it, some filament for them to get at least a good start. And I'm happy to say that we've started training some of those teachers, so we have TinkerCad training once a month, and we just had our first one in December, and it went so well, and it was so exciting to see the teachers be excited about the technology. But also, now, we're getting the files from students because they have so many kids that are so excited to use it, the one printer isn't enough. So Mrs. Myers prints them in the evenings, I'm printing them in the evenings, you know, I'll put the printers on before I go home, and then we put them in Courier and send them over, but it's exciting to see how well the students and the teachers are taking to this technology. And so when we took these 3D printers to the buildings, we realized that some of, you know, it needs to be put in the proper place, a safe place, a place where everyone can use it. We ended up redesigning some of the locations, you know, some schools had Makerspaces, but then because of the pandemic, a lot of those things had to be put away. So we are resurrecting them, we're redesigning spaces, making it a good place for a 3D printer. And thankfully, our PTAs across the district have been phenomenal. They have been purchasing things for the buildings to make this happen, to make fantastic Makerspaces. So we not only have a 3D printer in each space, some schools are getting vinyl cutters, which make wonderful stickers, we've got different areas, electronics and engineering, and we're in the process of setting those all up now. So you may hear from kids around the district or teachers how excited they are. The biggest thing that I hear when I travel to different buildings, Ms. Myers, how do I get in there? How do I get in there? When can I come back? That's what we love to hear. So we're very grateful to our families and our PTAs for helping with the financial costs of that as well, and we're really excited to see how our teachers and students use them in the future. And a couple of pictures here for you. This is Edison over here, and this is Willoughby Middle School.
What would be some things they would do in a Makerspace?
So, well, okay, so here's Willoughby Middle. They have, actually, their vinyl cutter is arriving anytime, so they'll have the ability to make, see these gear stickers here, or this giant sticker on the wall. We made like school spirit, you know, like their W to give as like prizes, or for PBIS, which is Student Behavior, like Positive Behavior System. They have 3D printers here in the back. They have, you can't see in the corner over there, they have recyclables, so they can do STEM projects. So students build bridges and boats and airplanes and whatever the challenge may be. We have another area with electronics, so students are experimenting with robots, coding, yep, coding robots, using different apps. We've got like batteries and different circuitry kinds of activities. Yeah, so, and actually, all the Makerspaces have similar, I set them up similarly, so they'll have, students will have about the same opportunity, no matter which building you're in. Some have different equipment that they had before, and then I say like, oh, cool, you have the marble runs, we need to get those for Longfellow, you know, so we're trying to make it pretty equitable across the district so that the kids have pretty equal opportunity as much as we can.
And then how would a Makerspace compare to our full-blown fabrication labs at SOI and North and South? What would be something you could do differently in a full-blown fabrication lab that you can't do in a Makerspace?
Right. Well, I would say, because I don't know if I can be heard? I think one of the things that I've noticed in the full-blown FabLabs is we have the lasers, which you cannot currently put in a Makerspace because of the ventilation and the cost of the lasers. So the students in full-blown FabLabs have a chance to actually design and build things using the lasers, and lasers can cut wood, they can cut, I've watched children build things out of cardboard, engrave things, but they also, we have soldering kits. So some of our kids more advanced are starting to learn to put together the components of electrical kits that they would, with lights and buzzers, and they're actually, one of the girls last year actually made a little box, she learned how to wire it, put the LED, she soldered it herself, taught three other kids in eighth grade how to solder, and then she engraved a piece of acrylic to put in there, so it was like a nightlight, but she fabricated all of it, on the 3D printer, the base, the acrylic on the laser, and then soldering the electrical components. Eighth-grade girl, and then she taught three other people. So that would be like a step above the Makerspace, but some of those things will be able to be put into the Makerspace. We could do soldering and we could do electrical in Makerspaces. You could. I would say that a fabrication lab has more digital tools, like more laptops, more computers, more machines, and then a Makerspace has a few of those things, you know, so some of that high-tech ability along with things that cost barely anything, you know, toilet paper tubes and cardboard and, you know, being able to make out of almost anything. So the cool thing in a Makerspace is that you could build out of recyclables, have an idea, build something, and then later model it on a 3D printer, you know, so you could build it in different forms, which you could do that in a FabLab as well. So, and the Makerspace really appeals to all ages, you know, we can have little bitty ones, like, we have the 3D printers, but we also have 3D pens, which, you know, we can teach like kindergarten, first grade. Watch the 3D printer, you might work on that when you get a little bit older, but watch how you're going to build up with this pen, you know, the filament melts, and you can build up just the way the 3D printer is, so.
That's exciting.
It is.
So I have been able to secure some funds, so I have a challenge for, you can purchase one piece of equipment for every FabLab and Makerspace, and I'll match it. So if you can find that through the PTAs to motivate them, it's like watching NPR. If you, any NPR fans here, you don't have to go through when they're fundraising, so this is your opportunity, if you can, anything you get there, I'll match.
Oh, I love a good challenge.
Count that 20 grand.
Oh, okay. There's always a count.
That's how much I have to spend.
There has to be. That's exciting, and thank you very much. And just the last thing that I would like to say is, if anybody is on social media, we do have Twitter, we both have Twitter accounts, and we're often tweeting out things that our students are doing, but also tweeting out things that are happening in other districts that have similar capacity, so that people get an idea of what it is. So Mrs. Myers is going to show you how to get a hold of us, and I think you're also on Facebook, aren't you? Yes, yes. If you want to keep up with all of the FabLabs and what's going on, if you go to schools all the way to the bottom to FabLab, and then click whichever you're interested in, Mobile FabLab South, our tweets are over here on the right, and then we have a website off of a website. And this is a working website that changes, teachers and students use it, parents use it, I've had parents, oh, can I do the challenges? Absolutely, that's why it's there for you, videos to help you, videos for teachers who are learning to 3D print. So please just be aware that our site is there, all of our sites and our Twitter accounts, so you can keep up to speed with what's going on in the district.
Well, thank you. You guys do a phenomenal job, and you can certainly tell the investment in energy, time, passion that these ladies bring, and that's why any project you do is only as good as the people that implement it, and these guys have done, far exceeded all of our expectations, and we hope that neither one of you ever retire. I don't know how we'll replace you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And you do not have to stay here for the board meeting, so, just so you know. Dr. Beal, next is our superintendent question and answer, and there were no questions submitted from, at our last month's board meeting.
Next is public comment, Mr. Chiranello. I would like to first thank the people who have signed up to speak for coming in. All speakers are asked to complete a public comment form and are reminded that they have three minutes, isn't a lot of time to speak. As a matter of policy, all comments are directed to the presiding officer, and if we can't answer your questions tonight, we have your contact information, you will hear from a representative of the district that is knowledgeable in your area of question, and in the interest of transparency, the answers will be repeated at next month's meeting. Before speaking, please state your name, address, and group affiliation if appropriate. Mr. Chiranello, who is our first speaker?
Stacy McWigan.
Hi, I'm Stacy McWigan. My address is 36260 Valley Vista Drive in Eastlake. I'm not sure what happened at North on Friday, but it was a mess, I mean, it was a mess. There was a lot of hearsay, so I don't want to get into that at all, but I'm going to tell you what I know is a fact. At 7:45 in the morning, my daughter sent me a screenshot of a picture of a handgun with a small hand holding it, that would, one would assume was the small hand of the student from North who posted it. She directed anybody who saw the post to follow an individual if he would like to buy a gun. It's not a threat, but scary nonetheless. We've had many discussions here in this room and with you, Mr. Thompson, about the danger that exists when a child has access to guns. They could shoot themselves, they could shoot somebody else, and unfortunately, the gruesome statistics are only getting worse in those circumstances, which we're seeing. Based on the fact that there was a slight increased police presence at North, I think it's safe for me to assume that somebody became aware of the post or possibly some other threats, because there were some rumors of other threats prior to the school day starting. I'd like to understand more about what determines whether or not a threat or an instance like that, a scary post, is addressed publicly. Because I understand that would have to be a hard decision to make, drawing attention to something that wouldn't have had attention either way, and I explain that to my daughter, who goes to North. On the same evening, a local school district had an unsubstantiated threat, and the principal sent out a letter to the parents Thursday evening, and this was just a small part of it. This evening, I learned one of our students made a comment about bringing a knife to school, so it was a bit different. Because I never want to take chances when anyone shares any communication that even hints at harming themselves or others, I immediately called the student's home. The student told me the remark was not serious, and their parents assured me their child does not have access to the means of harming others. Nevertheless, language that suggests potential harm is never appropriate and always a cause for concern. I notified the county sheriff's department for assessment, and a deputy went out to interview the student. We will respond to the incident according to school policies. So that wasn't giving any personal information about anything, and it was giving, this is what we heard, this is what we did, this is what we did next, this is what we did next. My 14-year-old thought nobody knew, it's that terminal uniqueness that these young kids have, I'm the only one seeing this, I'm the only one that can take action, and she was afraid. So, is it okay if I continue? I have one more page.
I have not through a whole page.
Okay, so basically, I'd like to know what we can do better next time? This is the same discussion that I had with her. She did not know that we have a Safe Schools hotline, so I had some other students in my car today that I was taking to tennis.
I'm sorry, will you be able to speak on that tonight?
Yeah, I think I can, yeah.
So when I asked her, what do you think, because communication is so difficult...
We understand that, but we do need to have Dr. Thompson address that.
Yeah, and that's okay, I just wanted to see, would the homeroom teachers at the high school and the middle school be able during homeroom to say, take out your phone, the high school kids have them, the middle school kids are probably on their bags, take out your phone, I'm going to give you a very important number. Give them the Safe Schools hotline, so that they're typing it right into the contacts information on their phone.
Thank you, we hear your question.
That's a good idea, Stacy, actually.
That was her idea.
Your daughter came up with a good idea.
Yeah, that was her idea.
So briefly, the story is that the night before, we received, I wouldn't even, I'm not even sure I would characterize it as a threat, I don't know what you'd characterize it as. It was a jumbled message from Safe School hotline that said, a person talked to a person who heard that there might be something happened bad at school. It was very nonspecific, and it was third-party.
Right.
So we called, I alerted all the building administration, called, we called the police, called our central office people, had extra people there, two extra police officers there. In retrospect, one decision, and the police deemed it to be a non-credible threat.
Right.
Now, if I had it to do over again, again, but here, if I had it to do over again, what we'll do in the future, but I say this with great trepidation, I'll send a message out that says it's a non-credible threat, which I could have done, and in retrospect, probably should have done, if I would have known how it was going to play out. But what I think we have to understand is, do you remember a year or maybe two at the very most at North High School, I'm sure your daughter was there, when we had 32 bomb threats in like 27 days? They were doing it to disrupt the operation of school.
Right.
Never once was any threat credible, but I also understand how it only takes one. And so it's this really tricky balance of not creating pandemonium or panic, but what happened was, that's exactly what happened, news to me right now that there was a picture of a gun in a hand. I've not heard that until just now.
Well, when she showed it to me, my first question was, did you tell an adult? No. I said, who sent it to you? Did they tell an adult? No. And I was like, what? No!
Yeah. So therein lies the balance, but the lesson that we have learned and will move forward is, we'll determine whether it's credible or not, we don't determine whether it's credible or not, the police determine whether it's credible or not. Once we have that piece done, we'll push that information out so a parent can make their own choice. And that's one lesson we learned from this.
I felt bad, as a parent, I didn't tell her.
Yeah.
And I was like, I thought you knew. And so, you know, can the teacher post it on their whiteboard for a week so it's there?
Yeah, I, we'll make sure, we've had posters up and all of that throughout the schools.
I've seen them, but when they're done looking at their phones, they're not looking at the walls, probably.
Yeah, yeah, but I think we can push, I think that's a good idea, so I'll make sure that we get that out to students and remind students. Again, the risk is, you know, I could get 20 phone calls tomorrow so that it disrupts school and we don't have school. You know, I, you know, of course, I'm thinking about Michigan the whole time, you know, how could you not be? But I'm also thinking about, parents need us to be in school, and it's not, I know at least the threat I received, I could easily tell it wasn't credible, the police could easily tell, it was just, it's a tough balance, but if we're going to make a mistake, we have to make the mistake on the side of caution.
Can you let them know that the line can also be used from an anonymous fashion? I understand the kids, they did...
In some regards, that makes it almost worse, but...
I know, I know that.
Yeah.
I know that.
Yeah. It's, but again, a friend's not going to call and say, my friend's suicidal, if they're going to, if it's not anonymous. So, and we need to know that as well.
Yeah.
And we've gotten tips like that before, so, and we move on those. Any, if any time we have a name or we can trace the IP address, the police go to the house, I mean, that's just standard protocol, and we never not call the police. But it's hard for them, too. I mean, there was no way to trace that down, run that down, there was no name, there was no specific threat, and then it mushroomed Friday during the day to the point where a lot of kids were scared, and we didn't really even expect that.
Right.
So, thanks for sharing, Stacy.
Yeah, well, thank you. Mr. Chandler, is anyone else signed to speak?
That's it.
Great. The next, the next item on our agenda is the appointment of a president pro tempore for the next month's meeting. I am looking for a motion to appoint a member for the position of president pro tempore.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to nominate Lawrence Vittori as president pro tempore.
Thank you, Mr. Oskus, do I hear a second? Mr. Jones?
Mr. President, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion?
Is he aware of the hazing that occurs for the president?
Yeah, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Okay, hearing none, Mr. Chiranello?
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vittori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you, Mr. Vittori.
Good luck.
Oh, my gosh.
Next item on the agenda is item 4A, approval of the minutes of November 10th, 2021. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to approve the minutes of November 10th, 2021.
Thank you, Mrs. New Year, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Vittori. Is there discussion? Mr. Chandler?
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vittori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
4B is the approval of the minutes of November 15th, 2021. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
I motion to approve item 4B, approval of minutes of November 15th, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Jones, do I hear a second?
I'll stack that.
Thank you, Mrs. New Year. Is there any discussion? Mr. Chandler?
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vittori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes 5-0.
Thank you. Item 5 is the treasures report. Mr. Chandler?
Five A's, the financial report for the month ended November 30th, 2021. Overall, we see our, we are, our cash balance is in line with our estimate within a million dollars, so I mean, you might be like, oh, my gosh, it's a million dollars. However, there are some things to consider. House Bill 110, I've been talking about that for six months, seven months, it's now pushed back to January of '22, so we will see that at maybe February's board meeting, so. But that's really pushing down the revenues, which is, like I said, we're in line, but the revenue piece is lagging, and that's largely because of House Bill 110. Even our expenditures are slightly behind, and a lot of that has to do with staffing challenges and lack of subs. So if anyone wants to be a substitute, Mr. Murphy's back there, he's applications. Seriously, though, we need substitutes, so I think we can, I mean, how many uncovered classes do we have? So, I think we can, I mean, how many uncovered classes do we have? Lot.
Our, our teacher...
Don't go down that rabbit hole. Okay, we won't talk about it. But, uh, and even I think there might be some, uh, full-time classified positions as well. So, Mr. Murphy's back there, um, he'd be happy to talk to you or talk to someone in HR. So, that's a five A. Five B, amended appropriations fiscal twenty-two. Most of this is due to the emergency connectivity fund. This was a million dollars. A big shout-out to Andrea Treeent, Director of Technology. She went out and got this grant and it will move us closer to one-to-one technology. So, good job.
We're gonna make that goal next year, right, Andrea?
I, it's looking that way.
No, no. We're gonna make that goal, Andrea.
Five C, resolution accepting amounts and rates. This is an annual requirement by Ohio Revised Code in the county auditor's office. This is to approve the rates of all of our levies. So, this is just in the annual item and this does require a vote.
Uh, so, item five C, I'm looking for a motion to approve item five C, resolution accepting amounts and rates.
Mr. President?
Mr. Raskus?
I will make a motion to approve item five C, resolution accepting amounts and rates.
Thank you, Mr. Raskus. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Is there any discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Raskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Mr. Channell?
Five D, community reinvestment area compensation agreement. This is not a standalone, standalone agreement. The first part was approved in August of two thousand twenty-one, uh, which was a commerce, community reinvestment area agreement, uh, for the Cleveland Veterinary Rehabilitation Center. It's between the school district, them, and the city of Willoughby, uh, of Willoughby Hills. So, this will allow the school district to access some of the income tax that the city's going to be generating from this business. And the, the community reinvestment agreement is a fifteen-year commitment. However, say, the business goes under in five years, uh, the CRA is no more. So, it's all, well, it's a maximum of the fifteen years. And it, the CRA was spelled out in August, it was there, stepped down. Um, however, uh, we all came together at the table and came up with an agreement we thought was a win for all three parties, so...
And, and this veterinarian clinic is very unique. It's not a traditional veterinarian clinic. It is one of the few, um, in the entire region. There aren't many in the United States. It's a rehabilitation veterinarian clinic. So, for example, a dog is in a house fire and inhales a lot of smoke, they have the treatment and, and equipment to treat the, to treat the animal, for example. So, it's very, very high-tech. And one of the things we wanted and they openly embraced was a partnership with our schools for an opportunity, not just for our SOE kids, but for all of our students to have an opportunity to at least tour and be a part and be engaged with them. So, what that is gonna materialize and look exactly like, we're in the process of, you know, still working on that, but it's just one more opportunity, uh, for our students to, to, to really experience something very unique and different. And for, you know, the handful of students that might wanna move into that field, it'll be exceptional for them.
Do I hear a motion to approve item five D, community, community reinvestment area compensation agreement?
Mr. President?
Mrs. New Year?
I move to approve item five D, community reinvestment area compensation agreement.
Thank you, Mrs. New Year. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President, I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. And I, I believe we had talked in August about the possibility of an internship or something where...
Yeah, there'll be some opportunities for internships for those students that are most seriously interested. And it all ties in with this whole concept of STEM, trying to really expose ourselves like Rachel and, and said, and Gail said about the eighth-grade girl who soldered and made, you know, that was an engineer, she's moving towards engineering, which is the whole goal of what we're trying to create. So, this will be a great opportunity for, again, it might be a handful of students, but for them, it's gonna be exceptional that, that they could get a possibility for an internship.
Do I hear any other discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Raskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Mr. Channell?
Five E is the Backpack Bill Resolution also, well, it's House Bill two-ninety. So, uh, I give Mr. Jones credit for wanting to put this on the agenda. This would expand the voucher program for students to take public dollars to private and charter schools and not only increase the amount of money, but also who's eligible to receive that money. So, we could be talking about millions and millions of dollars of public funds that could've been spent in public education, uh, going to private and charter schools. So, um, feels like public education's always, always under attack, unfortunately. Um, and this is just to show that we support public education and we don't believe that this is a good use of public dollars.
The most egregious thing about House Bill two-ninety that I don't think people understand, when people vote and pass a levy, the assumption is that that local dollars are gonna be spent at that local school. House Bill two-ninety does just the opposite because that money follows them and it goes out. So, thousands of dollars above and beyond what we receive from the state moves with that student to wherever they would go. So, that we're diverting public, local tax dollars to private entities. That's, that's not right, in my view.
Do you know where the House bill is in terms of its passage or not passage?
Um, I think it's in the Senate.
In the Senate?
This will likely pass.
Do I hear a motion to approve, uh, item five E Backpack Bill Resolution?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
I motion to approve item five E Backpack Bill Resolution.
Do I hear a second?
Mr. President, I'll second that motion.
Great. Do I hear a discussion? Uh, would, would, will this be sent to our reps or...
I'll send it to Senator Serino and also our House of Representatives and, uh, we, we have, what, two senators? We'll, I'll send to everybody and I'll send it to the committee that it's in and I'll just make sure everyone gets it.
Good. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick.
Uh, Mr. Channell?
Mr. Raskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Mr. Channell?
Five F, appointment of a referee. This is in pursuit to Ohio Revised Code thirty-three nineteen point one-six. Uh, the Ohio Department of Education appointed a referee to hear a, uh, an employment contract for an employee of the district. So, this is state law and the Ohio Department of Education has done this appointment.
Do I hear a motion to approve item five F, appointment of a referee?
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move to approve item five F, appointment of a referee.
Thank you, Mrs. New Year. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President?
Mr. Jones?
I second that motion.
Thank you. Is there a discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Raskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Mr. Channell?
Five G, purchase orders and blanket certificates. Uh, as you can see, we have a bunch of then-and-now certificates and yes, that is not a typo. We are paying a bill from two thousand nineteen. Um, I don't know, when they feel like invoicing, I guess, is when they wanna get paid, but we're not gonna harass them and say, "Let's pay you quicker," I guess, I don't know. It's, it's kinda mind-blowing sometimes. Um, and then we have some blanket certificates of fifty thousand or more and, uh, a lot of it is for the second half of the school year, so you see some larger ones like Peterman Busing, Compass Group, which is our food service, and then even some transportation. Five H is a service contract with TTG. This is paid with adult education funds, so this isn't paid with general fund dollars. This is maintenance, is maintenance and support for the POPULE program, which is Adult Student Information System, and also support of systems used for federal financial aid and state and federal reporting compliance. So, that is with the adult education program.
And I, as far as public schools that provide adult programming that generates revenue, if there's another public school that's doing that, I'm unaware. So, we're generating, we're doing really, I think, two things. Providing a great opportunity for maybe somebody who got out of high school and didn't pick up their LPN or didn't pick up, uh, something that leads to employment and they have an opportunity to come back to NCI Willoughby or NCI Eastlake, depending on what program they're interested in, and take that as an adult at substantially reduced rates, but it still generates the revenue from that, not only pays for the program, it generates some revenue. So, again, I think we're fairly unique in the country in that regard.
Five I is a student activity program, purpose, goals, and proposed budgets and revisions. Uh, the only one for this month is the South High School Store. I'm not very surprised to see them on here and needing an increase in their budget. Uh, we got to see a presentation on them, from them. It's been, what, about a month now?
Yeah.
Very impressive, very, very impressive.
And they will present, um, in March to the school board as well, to give you an update what's happening with our business programs and, uh, they're expecting to generate a hundred thousand dollars in business.
Wow.
Pretty incredible. And they're running that business from start to finish, ordering, taxes, management, production. So, it's, it's pretty cool. So, um, we're working on, uh, North is lagging a little bit behind South and, and like, like we said, Rachel, something, it's, things are only as good as the people that are there doing them. So, we have a new teacher at North and we're gonna spin them up and actually send our teacher from South to North to do some training specifically to get North moving at the same pace as, um, as South. And that will also incorporate our bank, uh, with, and our partnership with Cardinal Credit Union. And then, um, transitioning next year where every single junior in high school will take a personal finance class as a requirement for graduation.
Five J, gifts and donations. Uh, Matthew and Melanie Gazdak donated a nineteen ninety-nine Toyota Camry in spare parts to NCI Willoughby Automotive Technology Program. Willoughby Eastlake Public Library...
Did you have your driver's license in nineteen ninety-nine?
Hmm, no. 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 Um, oh, well. Oh, geez. All right, number two. I don't know how old these books are, but we've got some discontinued ones, uh, from the public library. So, uh, they're to the curriculum department and these books will be distributed to elementary schools, to the libraries, into students. Streb Electric donated five hundred dollars to the SOE Fab Lab, so that's exciting. The Ancient Order of Hyberians also donated two hundred and fifty dollars to the SOE Fab Lab. Industrial Mold and Machine donated five hundred dollars to Eastlake Middle School for maker space supplies or equipment. And the Willoughby Middle School PTO donated two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars to Willoughby Middle School for a partial payment of three new security cameras. So, I'd like to thank all of them for their donations.
And that is the final item on the treasures report. The next item is the superintendent's resolutions.
So, item A is, uh, is a lease for Frasier Productions Video. And since moving into this board office, we've always planned to lease out additional space in order to increase our revenue for the district. So, we're working on several deals. One is, uh, an additional one is the, um, Verizon Tower that, that will be installed on the roof.
I think it's T-Mobile.
Oh, the, art, sorry. I better get the right company, right? I pitched the wrong company. It's T-Mobile. Um, and Frasier Video's been a company in the community for several years and they'll now be located on the second floor here. They're very small, they just have a few people and will only lease out about ten percent of the floor space. But we're getting some incredible benefits from that partnership with Frasier Video for some professional work being done for us, by them, um, in return for some space. So, our goal is that by the time we get finished with this, we'll have enough offset to pay all our utilities in this building. That's our goal.
Do I hear a motion to approve item six A, Frasier Video Productions Lease Agreement?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. President.
I motion to approve item six A, Frasier Video Productions Lease Agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second?
I second.
Thank you, Mrs. New Year. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Channell?
Mr. Raskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, Dr. Beal. The, um, Educational Funding Group is a consulting firm that we contract with to assist in preparing our E-Rate funding forms. This ensures that our district is fully leveraging E-Rate funding, uh, to assist in meeting our current and future technology needs. E-Rate funding can be used to assist in funding network updates, classroom Wi-Fi, and internet services. And we're applying to use this year's funding to complete the network switch, updates and Wi-Fi network updates for Willoughby Middle School and Eastlake Middle. In subsequent years, we plan to target network updates at NCI and Wi-Fi network updates at Willwick, Edison, Grant, Jefferson, and Royal View. Andrea leads this charge and it's a good thing because I do not know what switches and hookups are, but she does, so that's a good thing.
Do I hear a motion to approve item six B, Educational Funding Group E-Rate Renewal?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Raskus.
I will make a motion to approve item six B, Educational Funding Group E-Rate Renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Raskus. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Do I hear any, uh, discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Raskus?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, Dr. Beal. This is a memorandum of agreement with W-ECP, which is our classified professionals. And the goal of this language change, and I believe all of our leadership in our unions, which I'm grateful we have great leadership from all of our unions, was to help improve or reduce our absentee rate. So we put in some language that would require doctor's note, for example, at a certain point in the contract. However, what we missed, and this is what it says, "In the contracts or classified personnel, there is language regarding absences and a ceiling on the number of days a person can miss before they need to obtain a note from the doctor." And this agenda item allows a person who is out for six days or more consecutive days to count as one absence. So what was happening was someone could have a surgery, COVID, a serious illness that is no fault of their own, and that's not really who we were targeting in our language change. And so this makes sense to work with the unions to make an adjustment when something makes sense. And so those will count as one absence. So that's kind of the background to understand why this contractual language change is being added.
Okay.
And it's consistent with our other unions.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to approve item six C, memorandum of agreement with W-ECP?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I move to approve item six C, memorandum of agreement with W-ECP.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Is there discussion, any further discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you, Dr. Beal. Item D is the memorandum of understanding once again with W-ECP, same union. And this is related to compensation. And previously, the board had approved a one-time compensation for some district employees for additional work being done due to COVID. This item and items E and F, which are the next two, follow us to award a one-time compensation to our remaining employees that were not previously covered under the first agreement. And if you're wondering, well, what is additional work that a secretary might do, for example? They're being slammed all over because we have so many absences. And when we get a COVID absence, someone's gone for a long stretch of time. You've heard us say, "Well, we don't have subs." So what happens when we can't get a sub and we have half the number of secretaries? Guess what? Ladies do twice the amount of work. And they're doing it without complaint. Our teachers are covering classes and not getting their planning periods. Our custodians are doing double the work. Everyone is truly, I think you'd be proud of what they're doing. They're working very hard, and sincerely, I rarely feel to complain other than generally, people are burnt. And I get that. But I'm sincerely grateful for what they're doing. And so I would like to give them a small one-time payment as well for really stepping up to the plate and keeping us open, quite frankly.
Do I hear a motion to approve item six D, memorandum of understanding with W-ECP?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I motion to approve item six D, memorandum of understanding with W-ECP.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. New Year. Do I hear any discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
You're welcome. Item E, for your consideration, is again another MOU. This is just with OPEC 159, who represent our food service workers. So it's the same thing for food service workers.
And I'll add that all of these are being paid with the American Rescue Plan funds, so.
Do I hear a motion to approve item six E, memorandum of understanding with OPEC number 159?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve item six E memorandum of understanding compensation with OAPSA, Food Service.
Thank you, Mr. Vettori. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear any discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Mr. Thompson?
Item F, for your consideration, is with our last, same thing with our last union, our OPEC 163, which is maintenance and custodial staff.
Do I hear a motion to approve item six F, memorandum of understanding with OPEC number 163?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I will make a motion to approve item six F, memorandum of understanding with OPEC number 163.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear a second? I mean, Mr. Roskis, do I hear a second?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I second that.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Mr. Channell?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Dr. Thompson?
Dr. Beal, item G is a special service agreement. And this is an agreement with ABA Outreach Services. It is paid for with funds from 516 IDEA federal grant money. So what this organization does is they work with our students that are impacted by severe behavioral disabilities. Many of these students are born with these impairments and can't access their education without assistance and intervention to address this. ABA Therapy assists the district with the development of functional assessment and behavioral plans so that we can provide applied behavioral analysis services to students. In essence, what they do is they come in with some of our most difficult students and help train our teachers to come up with plans to be effective so that these kids can do the best they can and learn and grow to the extent that they possibly can learn and grow. And to help us keep everyone safe as well.
Dr. Thompson?
Item H, for your consideration, is adoption of policies. This is the second read of adoption of these changes to policies. Last month, I shared with you that some in school districts in Ohio and surrounding states contract with companies to maintain current policies, administrative guidelines, and district forms, and there are a lot of them. Our school district contracts with a company called Neola, and they work with more than 500 districts, school districts in Ohio. There are 614 in Ohio, to put that in perspective. Twice a year, Neola publishes updates in order to keep school districts compliant with changes in federal and state law or government regulations. They also publish special updates to address matters that require more urgent consideration. Following these release of each update, Mr. Murphy works with an associate who provides consultation to review and explain the rationale for the changes and answer questions about proposed revisions. This process ensures that our policies and guidelines always reflect the most recent updates in local, state, and federal law. When changing policies, they must be presented or read at two school board meetings. And this evening, we're presenting the second read, which requires board action. And I would like to thank Mr. Murphy. Are you back there? Mr. Murphy has the fun job of going through these policies, which in my previous district, I had to do. And I was never more happy to delegate that process to you. Thank you, Mr. Murphy. It's very time-consuming. It's job security, right, Mr. Murphy? But it's very tedious, but it's incredibly important because you can find yourself in a very untenable situation if your policies are not in line with Ohio Revised Code, for example.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson?
Item I, for your consideration, is the personnel agenda. Each month, the changes in district personnel are required to be approved by the Board of Education. These changes will include retirements, hiring of new personnel, supplemental contracts, and some of the payments made to people that may have worked, you know, for example, at an athletic event. On this agenda, you'll see examples of all of the above.
Thank you. Item seven A, the next regular board meeting of the Willoughby Eastlake City Schools Board of Education will be on December 13th, 2021. January, sorry.
January 10th.
January 10th. January 10th, 2022, not today, at 7:00 PM. Do I hear a motion to approve item eight A, adoption of the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. New Year. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President, I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Do I hear any discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.
Passes five zero.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, I would just like to say it's been an honor to serve on the board, and I would like to thank Brian and Connie for their service. Connie was willing to step in and fill in when Mrs. Erin resigned. And we are very pleased to welcome your new board members, and we are proud of the accomplishments that we have had when we have served you. We were able to leave you with the healthiest five-year forecast that anyone can remember, with more than $30 million in the bank at the end of that time. We know that you've already begun your discussions to address important items, such as masking on students and others, and that you'll be working with the community on those issues. We wish you all the best as new board members. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Can I just interrupt for one second? I've been strictly told not to say anything, but I can't do that. I'm not quite sure that, well, I guess most of you would understand how difficult the last couple of years has been. When decisions, no matter what you make, are always wrong, and very controversial times, and when you find yourself in those situations, leadership is most difficult. And I sincerely want to thank you and Brian for being there and pushing through those difficult times and making very difficult decisions. And I know one thing for absolutely sure, regardless of decisions we all made, every decision was made in what we believed was in the best interest of students. And I know that that's at the core of both of your hearts. And I almost feel embarrassed to say, Connie, because we asked you to come back, and boy, did you get a chance to come back, didn't you?
I've never seen board meeting rooms so full every month. And I thought, wow, at least they're not ignoring us.
Well, that's for sure. But we sincerely appreciate you bringing all your years of experience and coming back. We will have a dinner, and I'll get that information out to you. And we have parting gifts and all that, but we're going to do a dinner. So I'll be in communication with you.
Great job. Thank you very much.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Mr. President?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Roskis. Do I hear a second?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones?
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mr. Channell?
Mr. Roskis?
Yes.
Ms. New Year?
Yes.
Mr. Vettori?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Dr. Beal?
Yes.